...special closed meeting, there are items listed here and anybody want to add one?
And I have five to add.
Just a minute. Please push your buttons again.
Well, my buttons aren't working.
Okay, Councilor Woodward first.
Yeah, just have a property item, Ted.
Property, okay, and Councilor Richter?
I'd like to add two property, two personnel, and one intergov. And I also have a question with regards to item F1, the personnel item, if a property matter could also be discussed in relation to that.
Yes, okay. Are there any other items to add? Mr. Beckham?
Bishop, this may be duplicating it, but we would have two property items and one intergovernmental item.
No, no.
No, that's, staff is adding that.
Staff's adding that.
Okay, are there any more additions? Okay, then all in favor? Opposed? Carried, then we're in special closing. Thank you very much. May we proceed? Mr. Beckham? Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. This is the meeting, regular afternoon meeting of Township Council, June 24th, and we're resuming it because we were here earlier and we take our break. And the next item on the agenda is a delegation by Leith White with the Langley Collaborative Homelessness Action Table. So we're going to ask you to take the mic, and I think it's a five-minute delegation spot that we've given you, if that's okay? And away you go. Welcome.
I just have a presentation I'm going to put up there.
You betcha.
Play. At the top, slide two. There we go.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Stand six inches back from the microphone.
It's very sensitive.
(laugh) Good afternoon, Council, and on behalf of the Langley Collaborative Homeless Action Table, we just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon and make our formal introduction and presentation to you. There's two key dynamics influencing our approach to addressing some of the issues of homelessness within Langley. The first is the principle of synergy. You may know it, but it is basically the result of the whole is always greater than the greatest of the individual parts. That is, together, we can do a better job and accomplish greater results than any of the individual parts. The other dynamic is the belief that community is a group of people living in the same place who share common interests, values, attitudes, and goals. So these two things bring us to this place of collaboration and of working together as a community to seek effective solutions to enhance our community for our community and for those who visit here. So a good friend of mine often says, "Together, we are strong." I would say that's absolutely true. I would also say more accurately that it is that we are better when we work together. What could that mean for Langley? Excuse me, I'll just click this here. Well, our vision is to create a welcoming community where everyone has a place to call a home. I'll just move us on here. What's our mission? Our mission is very simply by collaborating, using our resources, our relationships within our community to seek a positive change for those experiencing homelessness within Langley. That's through advocacy, awareness, and taking action. And for us as a group, we realize that there are big issues that require a lot of time and energy and resources and planning that we can't affect, but we can affect things within today up to about a year, two years down the road. Practical, tangible, immediate sorts of policy strategies, things that will impact the life of a homeless person in their everyday existence. So we can increase access to affordable housing, support services, and promote positive community engagement in each of these issues. What are our priorities? Well, our priorities are five. We'll start with reducing stigma and humanizing homelessness. And this means education, this means creating awareness, it means working with a wide range of our community to help communicate and bring understanding to who homeless individuals are. Everybody has a story, and a lot of the time, we judge from the surface. And I can guarantee you with every single individual that I know that is entrenched in homelessness, every single one of them has a story. Every single one of them never made the choice to fall into homelessness. It wasn't a choice. It was life experiences that seemed to push them. There were choices that they made along the way that contributed to their destination, their current circumstances, but nobody made a positive choice for homelessness. The second priority is to advocate for a continuum of housing for those who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. So we're trying to get upstream as possible. And again, that's working with a group of service providers within Langley. The other thing is advocating for a continuum of support services for those who are homeless and at risk of homelessness. The other thing is collaborating with local municipal regulatory agencies to build positive relationships with those who are homeless, working with police, bylaws, recreations, first responders, working within the local authorities, listening to their concerns and their issues, working collaboratively within our community. I think my time is up.
It is, but are you almost done?
I am, yes.
Okay.
The other priority is to enhance the local extreme weather response strategy. We want to make sure that everybody has a safe place to go in extreme weather, and that is both hot and cold. We tend to get stuck in the winter months thinking that, you know, with rain and snow, there's absolutely a need for shelter, but when it gets to 80, 85, you know, 90-plus and there's humidity and hydration and access to water is an issue. And so we're looking for solutions to extreme weather within the Langleys as well. We have a number of people that are involved with us. Most of them are comprised of nonprofits and service providers within Langley, but we're wanting to reach out beyond and work with businesses within the community. There's a lot of businesses that want to see change, that are currently, you know, experiencing the effects of homelessness, that just aren't satisfied with the current status quo of what's being provided. And so we're working with a wide range of groups and sectors and demographics within the Langley community, and businesses are a significant part of that as well. These are just some photos of a recent introduction that we had, and the key message is reducing the gap between being homeless and belonging. Right now, I would say primarily homeless individuals don't feel like they belong. They want to, the, Langley's their home, but they, the reception that they have is not one where they feel like they're actually a part of our community. So what's our ask? Our ask is first that you continue to give us leadership. You've provided tremendous leadership just with your decision to support the Creekstone Supportive Housing Complex. That's a milestone as far as we're concerned when it comes to Metro Vancouver's overall strategy to dealing with homelessness. It's a fantastic step for us within the Langleys, and we're looking for more in that, and just your continued support in those sorts of initiatives. The other thing is working closer, closer working relationship, consultation. If you have any questions or concerns or issues or hotspots within your township, we're here as a resource. Between all of our coalition of organizations and businesses, we're sure that we can help effect change and influence even other kind of dynamics that you may be experiencing within the township. And the other thing is it's a homelessness task force. Right now, there's, there's not a homelessness task force really operating within any of the Langleys. And so this is one where we think we can help effect a closer relationship, but also be very strategic in looking at what, what our needs are, what our concerns are, ways that we can be addressing homelessness within the Langleys as we continue to go further. Because one thing's, to be sure, it's not going away. And so our ability to manage it and deal with it as effectively as possible is only going to be enhanced by something like this. Thank you very much for your time.
Excellent. Yeah, thanks for your presentation. So we have a number of questions from council, so we're going to get into that consultative process right now. First is Councilor Ferguson.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for coming, Pastor White, Leith, and your team of folks that we're familiar with.
You're awesome.
What you've done in the community and abroad. I know that you've put countless hours, you and your team have put countless hours to help the homeless. My question is, with your team, those, that little schematic you show, those are kind of members of a round table you sit at?
No, those are individuals, or those are groups that we participate with within the community, and the one that we presented overhead is a revised one than one that you have. We've had some recent dynamics occur where we've had some people that just have to step aside at the moment, so some of those relationships have still expressed a desire to work with us, but there's some publicity at the moment that's kind of complicating things for them, so.
Okay, so my, my next question is, I guess it's twofold, is now that, given the monies available through the province for B.C. housing and other things, is there an opportunity for the city of Langley to perhaps put in more of a homeless shelter or something similar to what we've got?
I can't speak to that, unfortunately.
Okay, but it's ongoing. And the last thing is, I, perhaps, I'm a board member of the Langley Seniors Center.
Yeah.
I think they would love to sit and talk with you guys because they're concerned about homelessness for seniors as well, so let's just say something I would bring to your attention.
Wonderful. Yeah, we would welcome that.
And thank you very much for coming, and we appreciate all the hard work you do for the, for the community, the Langleys.
Yeah, thank you.
God bless you.
Yeah, awesome.
Thanks, Councilor Ferguson, and Councilor Richter?
Yes, I noted here that you're asking for a homelessness task force.
Yes.
But your group would strike me as being probably the best task force we could have because you're on the front lines delivering service. Like, is there, is there a way that your group could function as a task force and give input to council?
We would love that kind of relationship. Really, what we're looking for is, well, we want to be as invitational as possible because the more that we embrace this issue as a community, we believe the more effective we're going to be. And you play a critical role as council. You are the primary kind of, you know, leaders within our community when it comes to oversight and seeing these issues, and so you have to be at the table. We would encourage that, and that's our invitation to you. To have your support would be fantastic in that dynamic, and so we'd embrace whatever that would look like.
Your presentation, I'm so glad you're working together to help those people.
Thank you.
Councilor Whitmarsh?
Thank you for coming today. On the topic again of the homelessness task force, my understanding was the number of years ago, there was sort of a homelessness task force. And I'm wondering what the history of that is and why there is no longer a task force, and what makes a task force, say, different or unique from what, from the Collaborative Homelessness Action Table? What, just sort of talk about those differences.
Well, I think part of it is, comes down to focus. We've identified that we can, you know, we can effectively affect change immediately by a phone call and rushing out and trying to help somebody in a particular situation to possibly two years down the road. You know, being a grassroots kind of action table, we want, we want to have a bias towards action, things that, when you're entrenched in homelessness, the thing that is, gives you this sense of hopelessness is nothing ever changes. And so even while a great result with the Creekstone Supportive Housing Complex, it took a while to take, to come to fruition, and we're so close, and it's, it's, there's so much excitement within the community about it, so much anticipation, but that really pushes the limits for many. And so the scope of our capacity, we feel, you know, within our services and what we can do and how we can operate, we can function within this range. A task force, I think, looks a little further down the road and can look a little further down the road, understanding things from a, you know, township's perspective, you know, the regional perspective. We would say that the task force having that kind of support from either the township or the city enables us to work within, you know, a regional capacity as well. But, you know, certainly, presence there and the ability to, you know, be a participant in that, I think would be fantastic. You know, we're not empowered to do a lot other than what we do because we're passionate about seeing change happen and making a difference. And so that we can do, but there are other factors at play, you know, when it comes to funding and long-term strategies and, you know, that, that really, I think, complicate things for, for us. It's not that it couldn't be accomplished, but yeah. As far as why they don't exist anymore, I was a participant, as was Kim, and I, were you not at the end? No. So Kim and I were participants in the last task force, which was an initiative by the city. And basically, you know, a year later, after we gave them our conclusions and, you know, the proposal was written up, things really went nowhere, quite frankly. And I have some theories on that, but, you know, it's probably not worth it. But that is, that was the, probably the third task force that was set in place, and the third time, you know, consultants were brought in over the span of the last 10 years, I believe, where similar initiatives have taken place. And after each occurrence, they've just fallen away. So we go, we want to see change, we want to affect change, the best way to do it is with embracing community and engaging community and trying a different way, so.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, it's Councilor Arneson.
Okay.
Hi, thank you very much for coming. It's really appreciated to see you all here today, and I was actually on the same task force that you were.
Were, yeah.
So I have some intimate knowledge, I guess, of what was being discussed and who the participants were. And at that time, I hadn't really known about the history prior to that of other discussions and what would have been planned, because I was very optimistic that the idea was to have a consultancy group, work with stakeholders, and that way come up with a framework, and that way it would be something that you could use as a guidepost to have very concrete things that you could follow up on. So, but I have to say, on a positive note, for me, one of the things that was very valuable, I think for the township of Langley overall, was the idea that at that time, with that broad-ranging discussion, I think it created a large impetus for us to take the next step and start to work with B.C. housing and other service providers and groups, as yourself, to make sure that we were doing our best as part of the Langleys to provide also housing for individuals who needed it. So I think that that was a really positive outcome from that. And I know you do really good work in the community and that you're always very busy and active. And so I just really want to thank you very much and acknowledge your efforts and encourage you to continue, because if anything, I think that the township has stepped forward to be more of an active partner, looking at how we can use whatever resources we have to leverage other funds and opportunities, because homelessness is not something that's diminishing, unfortunately, in our communities. And I think we all have to recognize that it's a community goal to work together to try and address it, so I just appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much, and we applaud you as a council just for the steps that you're taking, and any way that we can support, any way we can contribute in any kind of consultation or dialogue, please feel free to reach out. Thank you very much for your time this afternoon.
Excellent, well, thanks for your presentation, and there is some nice materials that you've left with us that can be helpful to the whole community, I think. I see a page here, "How I Can Help," talks about how different organizations that can be contacted. Is there a sort of a one-stop website or resource that the community can go to, because there's a number of resources listed in your package?
Yeah.
But, you know, it's difficult to get that out. Is there, what's the number one thing that people can do?
Well.
Where they can contact and get the information?
We have a Facebook page at the moment.
Okay.
So that's L dash chat, C-H-A-T. You can look that up on Facebook. We're getting our resources up there. We have just produced a resource guide, which actually lists, you know, for anyone, any service provider, any new individual that's experiencing homelessness, it lists all the available resources, places where they can get a meal, it lists all kinds of, the timing of when services are available. So that's a huge, just to have that in one spot that is able to be handed out is, is already having an impact. Our CMP members have, are getting that into their hands so that they can hand it out to individuals. It's being carried by most of our service providers and getting that distributed, so yeah, we're just trying to get it into as many hands as possible, so.
Can I speak to that real quick?
Sure.
Just real quick, I'm Pastor Ward, I'm from five of two ministries. That's actually, those resource guides, city of Killawack, their council supported that resource guide, and that was a really tangible, accessible way for the, the city to start really demonstrating partnership. So the city helped produce that and then made it available at all the rec centers and all those things as well, just for your average citizen as well. And it's, it's a really practical engagement piece from the cities that helps alleviate costs for nonprofits, because we all don't make much, and the city could actually, you know, participate in that, construction of that very valuable document.
Good.
Awesome.
Helpful to know.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we'll clear the crew, okay, now we'll continue with the rest of the agenda, and the next item is F1, which is the 2018 Annual Report and Statement of Financial Information. The motion is there, and then we're going to take some public inputs. Would someone like to make the motion, and then we'll carry on? Move by Councilor Davis, seconded by Councilor Kunst, both sides, I guess, which is to prove it and to approve the statement of financial information. And we have copies of, the annual report have been distributed, I guess, online and everywhere else too. So right now, I'd like to ask this, the large crowd of audience here if they would like to make any submissions for public input. Is there any public input towards this annual report and statement of financial information? Would anyone like to speak? For the first time, for the second time, anyone like to speak? Any staff like to speak? No, you're not allowed to. And for the third time, has anybody in the audience wish to speak? No, then it's back to council and for discussion. Any discussion, council? None? Oh, wait a minute, there's a button been pushed. Okay, Councilor Davis. Oops, no, all right, pushed the wrong button, there you go.
Thank you. Just a question through to staff, Mr. Beckham. Page 20, we paid $45,315 to Canadian National Railroad, and on page 26, we paid 400, well, 403,000 to the Southern Railroad of B.C. What would that, why would we be paying the railroad?
Mr. Chair, I'll take a stab at it, and Ms. Sinclair is looking to see if she can find the specifics, but it is typically to do with improvements of railway crossings that we cost share with railway companies.
So the Canadian National, that would be down in Fort Langley. Well, it'd be a couple places, I guess. Yeah, okay, so, so they, it would be associated with railroad crossings.
That's correct.
That's not affiliated with what's happening now that we have to get every crossing fixed up?
It may, in some cases, in this particular case, the southern railway crossing improvements has to do with signage, improvement of signage.
Okay, that's $400,000.
And warning devices.
Oh, okay, yeah, that, okay. But another, one thing that just threw me off was Graham, on page 22, Graham Design Builders LP was $17,800. I just wondered, I am not familiar, maybe I should ask this question before we got to the meeting, I'm sorry, but I just, it was $18,900, I just, what?
So that's the ACUCC, the Aldercombe Complex?
That's, that's, that's what it goes to. Okay, that's, but that's, is that complete now? Or will it be on here next year?
Yeah, that depends upon when the final payments are done, there's often holdbacks that are done for construction purposes, so the project is effectively finished. There may be some monies that flow in 2019 only because of the holdbacks to make sure any deficiencies were addressed or remedied.
Okay, sorry, maybe one more question. The Greater, on page 22, again, the Greater Vancouver Water District is $12,500. That, is that for the sub, the pump station in West Langley, or is that to do with water payments?
It's a combination of both. It's the acquisition of water and some contribution towards the Jericho Reservoir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, just a question through the chair to staff. There is a note in the executive summary of this document about the threshold being $75,000 for the Soffe Employee Report, and some suggestion that if it had kept pace with inflation, it would be much higher. Is there, I'm assuming this is a challenge, or maybe not a challenge, is not the right word, this is a, a topic that would be faced by all municipalities, is there a mechanism for trying to move that so that there is some inflationary adjustment to this number, or how does that happen?
I would say rather than a movement, there's more of a discussion that's been occurring. I can't say there's been any concerted effort, but through the UBCM or the LGMA or something of that nature. The government chose traditionally not expressed any desire to revisit it. In fact, the threshold effectively becoming lower is just another form of disclosure, so they haven't taken much of a position on it.
Right, okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from council? Are you ready to call the vote then? We shall do. All in favor or not, please push your buttons. And that is, F1, I guess. All right, that's it. And it passes with everybody in agreement. Excellent. And now we'll move on to the next item, which is the agricultural land application number 100371. Can I have a motion? No? Oh, there's one. Councilor Arneson, seconded by Councilor Whitmarsh. Councilor Ferguson?
Yes, this is a application for the, the person to, who's lived there for a while, and they, they've lived so long there, they've owned the property, and they've lived so long in Langley. What are the criteria again for this type of application, if I may through the chair?
Your worship, I've owned the property continually since 1972 and effectively occupied there, so the, the process is really to permit farmers that have been on the property since the imposition of the Agricultural Land Reserve to continue to reside in their traditional homes until, well, until they, through their retirement.
Yeah, homesite severance, is called, right?
Yeah, so they're taking off the, their original home that was there in '72.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You. And Counselor Richter.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. I'm just wondering why so much land, 1.5 acres, is needed for home site severance, number one. And number two, the wording in this motion that says a remnant lot, and I noticed that the remnant lot is full of greenhouses. So is there a plan to sell these, these greenhouses? And if yes, are they going to be used for cannabis? Do we know? Do we have any idea?
Mr. Chair, in response to the first question, there are no, there are no requirements for home site severance applications to be a minimum or a maximum size. And as far as the intent of the applicant is concerned, as far as we're aware, there is a, an agreement in principle in place with a neighbor to the east for them to acquire and continue the operation of the existing greenhouse. That is the plan, as we have been advised. As far as other products that may, that they may choose to grow, we are not aware of anything at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak? No? Then we'll call the question, call the vote, which is... I gotta do this every time? And that passes without any opposition. There we are. Okay, and the next item then is the TransLink grant funding for 200 Street, the Matheson Creek Culvert Replacement Project. And there's a report here. Can I have a motion perhaps for that? I see a speaker already, but Counselor Davis is moving. Counselor Woodward is seconding. And discussion, Counselor Richter, you're up first.
Yes, I was just wondering if TransLink funds up to 50%. If we know why we didn't actually get 50% of the funding on this project, I see TransLink's going to give us 800,000, nothing wrong with that. But we have to put in over 1.2 million, if I'm reading this correctly.
Mr. Chair, the estimates are based on design and not contracted amounts. And I suspect there are eligible components to the works that are eligible for, for the grant. And there are components that are not eligible. So the intent always is to make sure that there is sufficient funding to address the entirety of the project and not just components that relate to the major road network.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And Counselor Arneson, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say, I'm really looking forward to this. I know it's infrastructure and it shouldn't really be so exciting, but I'm hoping some of our fish-friendly infrastructure will be part of this. And so I know we have a very high standard and I look forward just to refreshing and renovating what we currently have in order to make it better for our fish and their habitat. But through your acting worship, I'm wondering if perhaps Mr. Safi could advise, will there be any road closure or any kind of significant disruption while this work is taking place?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for the question by Counselor Arneson. It is often a challenge with arterial roads with heavy volume of traffic as to what is the best balance to make sure the residents in the area are not affected with nighttime noise, nor is the traveling public disrupted too much with lane closures. So in this case, we have adopted a bit of a balanced approach. There won't be any nighttime construction. However, there will be extended period of work. What I mean by that is that the, the construction period during the day is expected to commence around 7:00 a.m. and continue until about 7:00 or 8:00 p.m. to make sure that the project is completed quickly and efficiently without too much noise and disturbance to the surrounding residential areas.
Thank you. So any other speakers? No? Then we will look to the vote. And I'm figuring this out. This is F3. And we'll call the vote. And it passes with nobody objecting. Super. And then we're moving now on to the minutes from committees.
Do we have to shut the meeting?
No, we don't have that policy yet. Yeah, we're still good, Counselor Ferguson, but good eyes.
We'll keep you on track.
Yeah, yeah, sure. All right. So here we are, pardon me, at the minutes of the Heritage Committee. Can we have a motion to receive? Moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Davis. And Counselor Richter's up first on the minutes.
Yeah, a couple of questions here on page two of the minutes. The cost for developing an archaeological overview assessment, is there any or was any potential cost given for this in the presentation to the heritage group?
Maybe we could have staff answer that. My recollection, it was included in a budget of a while ago. Is that right, Mr. Safi?
That's correct.
Yeah.
As far as the actual amount is concerned, I don't have that handy, but I suspect it's fairly minimal.
Okay. And also, I see that the minutes note that the township does not currently have a terrestrial ecosystem mapping system for trees. So I'm wondering if this is the new terminology we need to know when we want to map foliage.
Mr. Safi, are we going to get one of those?
Canopy.
I'll have to refer to our consultant, our colleagues with the expertise in the, in that field, our breasts, your worship, and get back to council. I'm not aware of any.
I would be interested in knowing if this, if this such a system does map canopy, and if it does, what's the cost of getting such a system?
Okay. Any more discussion?
Great, thank you.
No, then we'll call the vote on that one, which is H1. This thing isn't very friendly, is it? Okay. It worked. And again, it's a unanimous vote on that. Thank you very much, council. Items from prior meetings. Oh, we have now motion to reconsider. And that was, is going to be moved by Counselor Richter. So the procedure would be that you would make that motion, I guess. And we'd have to call for a second there.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Woodward. Okay, this is the motion on reconsideration. And then if it passes, we would reconsider. If it doesn't, we carry on. Is that correct? All right, then we'll call the question. Just a moment, please. I have to find the right button. So that looks like it fails with Counselor Ferguson, Whitmarsh, Kuntz, Long, and Davis opposed. All right. And then we move to the next item, which is L2, or I2, I guess it is. Another motion to reconsider. So you're moving that to Counselor Richter? Yes?
Yes, I am, on the basis of new information that's come through.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll need a second then. Okay, seconded by Counselor Arneson in that case. So you'd like to speak, Counselor Richter? Go ahead.
Yes, because, and in our package, I believe it was, I don't know if it was the one this afternoon. No, it was the one that came out on the 20th, that the property seeking this particular soil deposit is actually a furniture manufacturing location out on ALR. So I would like reconsideration pursued on the basis of land use.
Anybody wish to speak to that? No speakers? Well, I understand that there's a concern about a business operating there, but I'm not sure if that affects my decision on whether the land should be filled for farming. That's my opinion. Counselor Arneson, you'd like to speak?
Yes, well, thank you. I wasn't going to. I was just going to let it go to the vote and see what happened. But I think it's really critical. My comments are not going to be about the new information, although I was very interested to find out that that was the case. Mine is mostly having to do with the fact that it seems to me that we spent quite a bit of time and staff resources as well as council discussion to come up with a protocol and a framework for these fill applications. And therefore, it seems like we've managed to inadvertently or advertently create a loophole in which council can now decide at their own discretion that we want to put them forward anyways, even if it doesn't meet the threshold. There-
Sorry for interrupting, but we're at the point of reconsideration, why it should be reconsidered.
Oh, so-
Sounds like it's going to the merits, which are very strong, but-
Yeah.
That's the first comment.
Okay.
The second comment, though, Mr. Chair, your worship, is right now, I think we have to correct a few comments in case this does proceed, and it may very well, that is furniture manufacturing. It was actually furniture distribution, lawn furniture, or that type of material. Since that time, we have put them on notice that they're not in compliance, and that is actually being brought to an orderly end through a separate process, which is through the bylaw license enforcement. So we should disclose that as we go forward so council has the information about how they can process it. And I would be cautious in terms of linking the decision back to previous use. It truly should be on the merits of why this is appropriate for soil or not appropriate for soil and reconsideration certainly in order. And Counselor Arneson was very well articulating some of the merits about that. But that might be better suited then to the actual reconsideration if we get beyond that.
That's right. And I probably shouldn't have made comment either before it was reconsidered. So right now, it is only on the reconsideration. And then if it passes, there can be more discussion. All right? So then in that case, I'll call the vote. Just a minute, if I can figure it out now. And that fails with Ferguson, Whitmarsh, Kuntz, Long, and Davis opposed. Okay. And that brings us to other businesses, is that right? J1 subdivision signs, if I'm correct? And that is a notice of motion by Counselor Richter. So you have the floor, Counselor Richter. Would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I will make that motion.
All right. And we'll need a second there, please. Seconded by Counselor Woodward. And discussion, Counselor Richter.
Yes, this came into public issue just in the last little while with regards to a neighborhood subdivision sign that was covered up by a flag. And then the flag was inadvertently removed from private property and had to be returned to the owners of the private property with, with an apology. And it raises the question for me about how many of these subdivision signs do we have that are on private property, number one? Number two, why are subdivision signs on private property? And number three, do we need to have some sort of a mechanism to protect these neighborhood signs from being removed or defaced or covered up or whatever? Because I think a lot of people do look at these neighborhood signs and see them as a reflection of their home, where they live. And so my motion here is basically to ask staff if we could get some sort of a report and some recommendations about what would be an appropriate mechanism to protect these signs moving forward.
Okay, any other speakers? No? Yes, all right.
If I may, I appreciate the motion by Counselor Richter, if I may, through the chair to staff. Do we have on file the list of subdivisions through the subdivision officer and where some of these signs may or may not be? Or would that be a great amount of time, energy, and effort to do, if I may, through the chair?
Mr. Chair, we don't actually have a list of such signs or potentially existing such signs. As a matter of practice, and not policy, but practice, over the past 10, 15 years, there have not been any signs that relate to single-family subdivisions that are not on the public realm or located within the public road allowance or, or public area. Those signs that are on private land, on private property, are typically to do with multifamily townhouse developments and not single-family subdivisions. So there would have to be a bit of a review in response to Counselor Ferguson's question. There will have to be a review to find out how many of these exist and where they are, if any.
Okay, thank you. So the majority of them are on public road allowances then? Is what we're hearing?
That's correct.
I've certainly seen a few. Okay, any more discussions? All right, then we'll call the vote on this, which is, come on. Oh, that passes with everybody but myself opposed. Just to test the system. All right, so that's passed. And I think re-termination!
New business.
All right, other business. Any other, any other business from council? Yes, Counselor Richter, go ahead.
I was wondering with regards, and I probably should have brought it up when we first started the meeting, but I noticed tonight we've got two delegations basically on the same topic of the Fort Langley Jazz Festival. So I'm wondering if we could simply collapse these two delegations into one delegation?
My understanding is they are essentially one, but they're in two parts. But they made two applications, which is consistent with our bylaws at the moment. So our procedural bylaw allows that, and that's what they've done. But would you care to comment, Mr. Beckham?
Correct, your worship. The reason, I think, is, and I don't know this, it may be because they want the 10 minutes and not just the five minutes that would go with one delegation.
All right. That's the answer, I'm afraid. And Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, so I'd like to also, I mean, I don't know if we need to do a motion. And we can do that at the start of the agenda adoption for the evening meeting, but I also would support collapsing those down into, into one delegation. I don't know why we need 10-minute delegation on the Jazz Festival. Thank you.
Okay. And Counselor Richter again?
So if we're going to do that, should we do a motion about it now, rather than have them show up and then tell them we're only one delegation?
Can we have a procedural question answered there? I guess it's on the agenda for tonight. So when we approve the agenda, we'd have to. If we do it now, you're doing business from a meeting that we're not actually in. Perhaps, you know, don't forget, we're revising our policy in this respect, and who knows where that'll go. But I can assure you that my understanding is that the first part of the delegation is just a rendering of when the Saints go marching in, and that the actual delegation will come from the second part. So we could maybe try and get them to take their, to condense the time a little bit. I could ask them to do that.
That's correct, your worship. We just conferred with staff, and it is more of a presentation. One is the entrance and one is the actual, I guess, delegation itself. But as it's two different parties, they joined, they did them as independents. Council, if they were to actually try to limit their time to an overall of five minutes and not accept one of the delegations, it'd probably be appropriate now to reject one of the delegations and deny the delegation, as council has the right to do.
Well, I'd like us to just to continue. It's up to you, council. But I mean, I don't think it will be a full 10 minutes. And maybe I could speak to them beforehand if that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, if that's procedurally how it has to be done to reject delegations, I don't think that that's the right form. I think what I read was forms of two people filing two delegations to get 10 minutes. And it was one of the items I brought up in CPC this afternoon, that this is a trend, that we have some people coming to council, not really with any specific council ask at all, simply to promote their event. And now they have 10 minutes to do that rather than five.
Okay, any further discussion? Any, yes, go ahead.
With regards to item number 15, page 51, that came out on June 20th, and which staff have responded to and included as item number 12 on today's items distributed, I was just wanting a clarification from staff. Will staff be following up with the developer on this? Because it's clear that the developer is responsible for another two years of these plantings, and the area residents feel that the plantings are out of control and need to be trimmed back.
Does staff have a response to that? So that's referring to item 12 on today's distribution?
Yeah, it's item 12 on today's distribution, page 32.
I'm afraid I don't have that, your worship. Today's distribution, page, maybe Counselor Richter, if you don't mind, can you-
Yeah, it was-
... outline the topic?
Mr., it was a gentleman, I believe, up in, he's referring to property at, on 66th Avenue at 202 Street. And the plants have not been managed. And the response that was sent to him from staff, I believe under your signature, Mr. Safi, as part of the requirements, the developer is responsible for maintaining the streamside area for a three-year period following substantial- three-year period following substantial completion of works. So, I'm just wondering if staff are going to follow up with the developer to make sure that this work is now done. It sounds, although it doesn't specify, that the developer is still responsible for these plantings.
Thank you very much, Counsel Victor. And now, remember the exact location and the response. Yes, staff will follow up with the developer to make sure that the... I believe it was a three-year period that they maintain their responsibility and follow through with their obligations.
Great, thanks very much.
More items for new business?
You should share more meetings.
I don't know. I don't think I want to.
Termination!
Okay, Counsel Davis has moved to termination, seconded by Counsel Kuntz. All in favor? Opposed? We're terminated until 7 o'clock.